So let's get this started and calling this meeting to order on six thirty February third, twenty twenty-one. So start with, excuse me, with introductions, Donna.
Don Dehand, District one.
Hey, Donna. Okay, Dan.
Muted.
Looks like you're muted, Donna.
Okay.
There you go.
No, now it's muted.
No, no, you're good now. We can hear.
Okay, okay. That's great. Okay, thank you. Yeah.
So would you introduce yourself?
Yep, Donna Nickerson, District three.
Okay, Kyle?
Kyle is a Husky at large.
Ed?
Ed Fleischer, District two.
Eric?
Eric Casino, District two.
Scott?
Scott Nelson, District three.
And Doug?
Doug Carmen, District two.
And I'm Jim Simmons at District three. So thank you all guys for being here. I'm looking for an approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this. And next we're moving on to the approval of meeting minutes.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I'm still.
All those in favor say aye.
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 It's gonna be that one, that kind of a year, huh?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Okay, before we get into public communications, I just want to say for myself, thank you for the privilege of being your chair for this next year. And thank you, Scott, for paving the way for me and showing me how it's done. We appreciate your service and thanks a lot. So we're on to public communication now and seeing two people so far that have raised their hand. Oops, oh, three. Phyllis. Phyllis Farrell.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for your work and your service. I sent some comments to you today, earlier today, so I'll just summarize those. But regarding the shoreline master plan, Section nineteen six hundred point one oh two, general shoreline modification. On numeral four, it states that the plan should assure that shoreline modifications individually and cumulatively do not result in a net loss of ecological functions. My question is, how is the draft plan assuring that modifications do not result in net loss of ecological functions? What are the metrics used? How's it monitored? And what's the enforcement strategy if a project does result in that loss? I think that those questions should be addressed in the plan. In subsection six, the plan for the enhancement of impaired ecological functions were feasible and appropriate while accommodating impaired uses. And it goes on, but given the decline in shoreline functions, there should be no accommodating permits issued if they will impair ecological function. If a project will impair, it should be denied. In section nineteen point six hundred point one six oh, mooring structures and activities. In or, excuse me, in order to reduce arming to enhance ecological functions, as recommended by the Puget Sound Partnership and the tribes, I'm opposed to eliminating the requirement to consider alternative mooring prior here to allowing piers and docks or allow on docks in the natural environment, especially marine environments. That is currently in the draft language. The draft should maintain or improve shoreline buffers, reduce arming, and phase out the use of plastics and aquaculture operations. Require reports from aquaculture operations with metrics of no net loss. Perhaps this is done now, but I have not seen where those reports would be publicly available. And lastly, does the plan account for climate change and sea level rise projections? Current proposed legislation will require this, but it only makes sense to address it now. I urge you to ask the staff to address these questions in the in the draft plan, and thank you for your consideration and your service.
Thank you, Phyllis. Just a reminder to everybody, and if you're new, that there is a timer. You have three minutes to speak during the public comments period, and you'll see the timer on your screen, or you should. And it'll go from green to yellow. At the yellow stage, you have thirty seconds. And when it turns to red, please kind of finish your thoughts and wrap it up. So thank you. How about Barry Halverson? Oops, there you go.
Good evening, Commissioners. As mentioned, my name is Barry Halverson. I'm a participant in the Thurston County Lakes Coalition and a steering committee member of the Lake Lawrence Management District. I'm talking to you tonight about two subjects, Chapter six hundred, dredging and dredging disposal and shoreline environmental designations for Lake Lawrence Reach LLA eight. On the dredging and dredge disposal, Chapter six, paragraph nineteen six hundred one thirty-five, A, B, and C. On twenty-one January, following our last planning commission meeting, I sent an email to Andrew on this subject, asking him to clarify permit requirements for maintenance dredging. It is very difficult to understand what permits are required. What are the requirements for maintenance dredging? The SMP and all references in paragraph six hundred do not provide clarification of this issue. It's very vague. Reference Reach LLA eight. You should have received copies of the seven January letter submitted by the President of the LLCC HOA, Jim Crandall, and a copy of the twenty-seven January letter submitted by steering, the steering committee of the Lake Lawrence Community Club, with all the steering committee members signing it or putting their name on it. It was via electronic, but they all requested to be put on the letter. Requesting that the designation of natural be changed. It is totally inappropriate, as evidenced by the facts provided in both letters. If you have reviewed the evaluation of the SEDs for Reach LLA eight, that was attached to the twenty-seven January letter. You can readily see how the criteria for a natural and rural conservancy designation either meets or does not meet the criteria for each designation. It is very obvious from looking at that, that a designation of natural does not meet six of the seven criteria, while a designation of rural conservancy does meet six of the seven criteria for that designation. The steering committee, which has fifty-plus years of volunteer experience on Lake Lawrence, conducting lake surveys, aquatic weed prevention, noxious and invasive weed identification, and eradication, shoreline restoration, and stewardship, has included its reasoning for each of these criteria. There is no group better qualified to make this assessment. We hope you will concur, and thank you for the attention to this matter. Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. So next up is John Woodford.
Good evening, Commissioners, and congratulations, Commissioner Simmons, on your election to Chair of the Committee. I just wanted to say something briefly about the re-designations. We've, this will be the third planning commission meeting in a row, which you'll be, you have been dealing with specifically. Parcels have been brought to your attention, and so far, as I can see it, the staff has struck out on every one of these to date without a single hit. I think it's time that staff reconsider this whole re-designation. You've got only a little more than twenty-six hundred more parcels to deal with. This could take months without doing anything else. Now, back to Chapter nineteen six hundred. I sent a letter two weeks ago that you all should have had before the meeting, and at that time I raised two issues. And I'll just recap that briefly in the matrix in Table nineteen six hundred one oh five. And then in brought forward in a couple of other points. I see no reason for industrial uses to be permitted in any shoreline residential area. And I think it'd be worth your while to ask Andy why he has put this in. It's a change that he made. It had been prohibited up until the the revision just immediately preceding this one that you're working on now. Then in on nineteen six hundred one sixty, mooring structures and activities. I singled out in my letter two weeks ago an example of my own dock or pier on my property here on Long Lake. And I think the the whole thing of restricting or putting a limit on the spacing of pilings is is just totally inappropriate on freshwater lakes. In fact, almost everything in nineteen six hundred one sixty, mooring structures and activities should be, should be the recognition of freshwater lakes as opposed to marine waters. There's almost none of this. It's appropriate to freshwater lakes. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? I'm not seeing anybody right now. Going once? Going, going twice? Okay, we're moving on. So it's off to you, Andrew.
Good evening, Planning Commission. I'm Andrew Defobus with Thurston County Planning. So tonight, we will take a look at a request for the planning commission to look at the proposed designation for a reach on Lake Lawrence, and then we'll continue our review of Chapter nineteen six hundred. Let me go ahead and pull up a presentation. Okay. Is everyone seeing PowerPoint? Great. Okay, wonderful. So as I mentioned, we'll take a look at a request from Lake Lawrence, and then we'll work on Chapter nineteen six hundred of the draft SMP. So staff have received a question about the proposed designation for Reach Lake Lawrence eight, which is abbreviated here as LLA, LLA eight. And that request was forwarded to the planning commission and also posted on our website. And also then a subsequent written comment in support of that request and those issues was also posted and sent to planning commission. And so you are here to hear information about this, and ultimately shoreline environment designations are preliminary. They can be changed if we receive information that differs from what's in the record. So after consideration of the criteria, the planning commission can choose to revise the proposed said for the public hearing draft of the document. So briefly, some of the issues raised in that, the the written comments that were received was in that Reach Lake Lawrence eight. Essentially composed of an island. How much of it is subject to the SMP? What would be an appropriate designation for that reach? The comments note that natural may not be, that it may be appropriate perhaps for a portion of it, but not the whole thing. And then they also talk about several activities that they plan for the future out there on this parcel, including rebuilding some bridges that used to be there, fencing a parcel that's owned by the community organization, and continuing to control invasive plants and continuing to have recreational uses out there, which have been long established. So just some general background for folks that are watching, and planning commission knows all this very well by this point. This builds on information that we've discussed at previous meetings on shoreline environment designations. Essentially, a part of the shoreline master program process for any jurisdiction is to take a look at their shorelines and inventory and characterize those shorelines, the features and the functions and the development patterns and all of those things, and then designate environment designations for those, for those shoreline reaches. There are state laws that provide guidance on this process, and this portion of the shoreline master program update was, has previously been completed for Thurston County. Oops, the county recommended, or the county has chosen to use five of the six recommended designations on the menu developed by the Department of Ecology and also develop criteria consistent with what's in the wax. And listed below there are the five that the draft SMP uses. So the shoreline environment designation report details the methodology that was used to match the different shorelines to these SEDs, the shoreline environment designations. Basically, the inventory and characterization information for each stretch of shoreline was evaluated alongside the criteria for the different designations to match them up and propose a designation for each shoreline reach. And the preliminary shoreline environment designations that are in that report were made to protect shoreline ecological function and also in looking at the proposed and existing development pattern out there on the shorelines. So what it boiled down to is that if the reaches that were thought to have high-quality habitat features or were minimally modified, were proposed to receive a natural designation. The ones that were the most developed with, you know, relatively high-density development or more intense uses were proposed a shoreline residential designation. And then other shorelines that did not meet either of those characteristics were were proposed to be either rural or urban conservancy, depending on whether they were outside or inside of an urban growth area. So I have this information up here just for each of the three of the designations that we'll consider tonight. Just, you know, for reference, if we need it, we can refer back to this, and some of this is down below in the presentation as well. But here if we need it. Okay, so we are talking about Lake Lawrence, and for context, on the left side of your screen, you'll see the map of the county with a yellow circle where Lake Lawrence is generally located. It is in the southeastern portion of the county, south of the city of Yell. And on the right side of your screen, that is an aerial photo of the lake, and we're gonna be, hopefully my cursor shows up. We're gonna be talking about this area here on the western shoreline of the lake, this big wetland area over here. So this reach is Lake Lawrence eight is proposed to be natural in the draft SMP, and that's, that's why we're all here tonight. The green is, you know, the designated area of natural. So I did want to point out, I went back and took a look. This is the current designation as it exists based on the nineteen ninety shoreline master program. Looking at the the mapping that we have at the county, a portion of this parcel, which is, you know, this big area here and this reach was mapped as natural as of the nineteen ninety shoreline master program. I understand the the shoreline environment designations report and the inventory and characterization appendix state that it is currently undesignedated. I'm not sure why that is. I'm trying to find out some information on that from my, from the GIS folks if I can. But the bottom line is, regardless of how it is mapped or how it is shown in those reports, based on the shoreline management act and the language of the current shoreline master program from nineteen ninety, any wetlands that are associated with a shoreline lake and the shorelines of a of a lake, you know, two hundred feet upland from the ordinary high watermark are all subject to the SMP, whether or not they are mapped as such. And the, this is a good point to remember that the jurisdiction of what's going to be subject to the shoreline master program is determined at the site level during land use review. So, you know, you see these layers that are on here, and when we see an application in the permit center, that will flag the parcel for shoreline review, but, you know, the actual determination of whether a project is inside or outside of shoreline jurisdiction, that happens at the project level. Okay, so now let's take a look at this reach alongside the different criteria for the various shoreline environment designations. So is this an ecologically intact reach that is performing an important irreplaceable function? You know, some of these categories kind of run run together, and some of the, some of the pieces of it ecologically intact are down below in terms of the structures and configuration of the shoreline. But suffice it to say, you know, there is a mix of native and non-native vegetation out here, and I would say a gradient of of conditions. There are some areas of this parcel that have been more disturbed and some that have not. What you can see on the the left side of the reach there that is the canal, right? There is a canal that is used for navigation on the lake and for shoreline property owners that are both out onto the lake. And so that portion of this reach has been altered in the past in terms of, you know, the canal that's been dug and has been maintained, and the dredge spoils, I understand, are placed on that island when that activity occurs. So is it thought to or considered to represent an ecosystem of particular scientific and educational interest? There was nothing specific noted in the inventory characterization or the shoreline environment designation report to that effect. I would point to, you know, wetlands are in general subject of scientific interest, but there's nothing specifically noted for this specific reach in the documentation. Is it unable to support new development or uses without significant adverse impacts to ecological function or risk to human safety? This site is significantly encumbered by a wetland, you know, according to our mapping, and that may be gradient of, you know, wet to dry conditions as you move across this reach, but according to our mapping, it is, you know, significantly encumbered by that, by a wetland, and if that were to be impacted, it would require mitigation. So potentially there is impacts to ecological function to consider there. Does it include largely undisturbed portions of shoreline areas such as wetlands and ecologically intact shoreline habitats, to paraphrase? Again, mapped as a wetland, but there are, there is evidence of past disturbance out there. You know, mainly the maintenance of that canal and the deposition of spoils on the island, and I know that there are trails that run through it, at least a portion of that property, and the vegetation is managed by the community as well. So the invasives are removed, and I believe there's general mowing that goes on in the areas that are used for recreation. Does it retain the majority of its natural shoreline functions as evidenced by shoreline configuration? I have not been to the site, but I think it, again, it's a, it's a mix of, you know, a mix of vegetation types out there, both native and non-native. There's gonna be portions that are, you know, more heavily disturbed than others, but that shoreline configuration has been altered to some degree. And then is it generally free of structural shoreline modifications, structures and intensive human uses? Yes, in the fact that there aren't any structures out there. The comment letters that we received noted that there are bridge abutments remaining on the island from when there used to be a vehicle access bridge from the upland onto the island. But generally speaking, there's not a lot of structures out there. There's not a whole lot of development, but there have been those past patterns of alteration that we discussed, that I discussed. Okay, turning to rural conservancy and looking at this reach alongside those criteria, is it outside incorporated municipalities and urban growth areas? Yes. Is it currently supporting recreational agriculture, forestry, or recreational uses? Yes. By the testimony that we have received, this reach is currently used for recreation by the members of the Lake Lawrence Community Club, and as I understand it, the access is not restricted to the general public either. It is not currently accommodating residential uses on this island specifically. However, whoops, it is supporting that recreational human use and is subject to environmental limitations such as the wetlands. And technically, the whole thing, I believe, is, or at least large majority of it is in the floodplain as well. Because it's a lake and a wetland. So can it support low-intensity water-dependent uses without significant adverse effects to shoreline functions? It would appear that that's the current use of the land, that it is being used for low, low-intensity passive recreational uses. And is it private or publicly owned lands with a high recreational value or valuable historic cultural resources and potential public access? I would, again, I would say so just based on the current pattern of land use. It's currently being used for both private and public access to the shoreline. And then does it meet the criteria for natural environment? We just went over that, and I think there's a gradient there. I think it actually needs some of those criteria. It's others. Okay, so looking at this, just for for full coverage here, looking at this reach against the criteria for shoreline residential designation. One of those is, does it, it doesn't meet the criteria for natural or rural conservancy environments, and I think, as we just saw, depending on which criteria you're looking at, it meets some better than others. Is it predominantly single-family or residential developed or planned or plotted for that development? I don't believe that is the case unless I'm mistaken. It is, it's, you know, largely undeveloped with active residential uses. It's recreational use that, you know, is it in close association with the residential uses around the lake. The majority of the lot is, however, within shoreline jurisdiction. And have ecological functions been impacted by more intense modification in use? I think there's gradient. In some places, that impact may be more severe than others. The landowner, the community club letter that we received references invasive plants that are present on the parcel, and again, you know, there's been a canal that has been dug and maintained, and a portion of that island has been used in the past to deposit the the spoils from from the dredging. Okay, so some information, some context to consider is that shoreline conditions vary, and shoreline reaches, no two are gonna be identical, broadly speaking. And you might find that a shoreline reach meets the criteria of more than one shoreline environment designation. And so the thing to keep in mind is, you know, with all, all of this in consideration, what is the best, what's the best fit? What's the most appropriate shoreline designation to apply? And just a reminder, shoreline jurisdiction goes beyond just the lake itself. It does include wetlands that are associated with that shoreline water body, and it also includes what we call the shorelands of lakes, which is, you know, a line extending two hundred feet upland from the ordinary high watermark. And that how that all applies to a specific project is determined in the field. And then I've got a little table down there that kind of summarizes the the gist of this here. It's currently designated as natural, or at least a portion of this reach is, according to what I was able to find, the proposed designation is natural, and you're here to hear the case for whether it should or should not be. Okay, I have, just if we need it and need to refer to it, the definition of ecologically intact, which fits into the natural designation. And my findings are essentially that this reach appears to meet some of the criteria of more than one designation, as we've said, can be the case. So it looks like it meets some of the criteria of natural. It meets some of the criteria of rural conservancy, and based on all the information that I have in front of me and doing a desk review, it appears that either designation may be appropriate. The the property is generally free of structures. It is currently used for human uses and that recreation. The shoreline configuration has had alteration in the past, and there are environmental limitations that are present to more, you know, significant development. So that's all I had on that. So I will pause here and turn it over to the planning commission for your discussion.
Andy, let me ask you a question. What's the significance of that yellow line that runs north-south through the island?
Are you talking about, oh, this here?
Yes.
That is a parcel line. So it's, it's the best, it's, you know, the best estimation of the parcel layer, and they're certainly not perfect. There's always a little bit of shift, but that is to, that is how we have the boundaries of the parcel mapped in our records.
So is the wetland east of that parcel line, or does that have parcel line evidence to do with it?
So the parcel line, again, you know, it's, this is all general screening information that we use. If we, if we needed the parcel, if development application were to come in and we needed the the parcel lines more, you know, completely determined, we could work with the landowner on how to do that. This is just for mapping purposes, but, you know, the, it's what's on the ground that controls. So, you know, if there was a a use outside of the bounds of the the yellow line, I mean, it's still technically the property, so it was the, you know, the appropriate regulations still apply.
What, was that supposed to be like an estimation of the ordinary high watermark at one point?
I don't know the history of the parcel layer. Honestly, it's interesting, though, when you look at the, you know, the designation, how it's designated now versus how it was designated in the past. It's two different polygons. So at some point, there was some additional work that's been done out there to determine the boundaries of either dry land or wetland. I'm not exactly sure. But, you know, this is, again, with But, you know, this is, again, with all of our mapping data, it's the best data that we have to represent what is actually on the ground. But, you know, that's why we ground true things, and it's what's on the ground that ultimately controls.
And, and we believe that that canal was first cut in there 70 years ago, 60 years ago, or something like that?
I, you know, I, the, I think the letter talked about, the letter talked about that there have been human uses of this parcel since it was developed back in the 60s. I'm not sure if that was when the canal was put in or if it was sometime later, but it's, you know, pre shoreline planning is, is my understanding.
Do you, do you have a estimate on how, how long that canal is? I mean, it looks like it could be 500 feet.
I believe it's longer than that. I'd have to go to GeoData and look at that, but it's, it's fairly long. I mean, it's, yeah.
So that canal might have added a third of a mile of shoreline.
Well, the whole thing is, again, if it's, if it's, if it, you know, think about where the ordinary high watermark of Lake Lawrence is. And then any wetlands that are associated with that body of water and even any dry areas that aren't wetland, if it's within 200 feet of the ordinary high watermark, it's going to be subject to, to the shoreline jurisdiction.
No, no, well, I, I understand that it's, it's definitely subject, but if, if we're trying to determine what is, some lands are certainly more valuable than others, even within the SMA. So shorelines are probably more valuable than wetlands. So even adding, you know, a half a mile worth of shorelines, I think that that's a great thing, or three quarters of a mile of shorelines by cutting that canal in that. I, I can't see where that was anything but good for, for our shorelines is to add to them. But maybe I don't understand it, right? Maybe you can explain it.
I, I mean, I think I would look at it more from a lens of, you know, what's, what is subject to the act versus what is not. And I mean, if, if that was dry land before, they've created potentially, you know, if it, if it were dry land and it were 200 feet back from the ordinary high watermark, and they've now created shoreline, then you're right. But, you know, if it was already wetland, and, and again, the whole, this whole island is mapped as wetland. We, we haven't done a delineation. I didn't do a, you know, go out and do a wetland delineation for this, for this meeting. But, you know, if the whole thing is wetland, then the whole thing is subject to the SMA.
So what would, what would be the adverse impacts to the HOA's use if we designated this natural instead of rural conservancy? Development's going to be limited, no matter what, no matter what's going on, there's probably not going to be any opportunities for any development out there, especially since this is HOA communal land. But use is something that is, is certainly of interest. So what would be the adverse impacts of, of that?
I would have to look at what the, so thinking about the draft SMP and, you know, what would be allowed out there. So this might be a good case study as we, as we look at this. But, you know, generally speaking, as you, you know, the natural environment would potentially have more, more regulations and fewer allowances than the rural conservancy. Just that, as a, as a broad statement, right? That's kind of how they shake out. So I, I can't, without looking specifically at the development standards and also, you know, seeing an actual application for what they want to do, right? That's, that's, you know, I, I was kind of trying to wrap my mind around these different activities that are planned out there and what the shoreline master program might say about that, but it's kind of, it's hard to give a truly prescriptive, you know, analysis unless we're looking at some more finer details.
I guess my point on it is, I don't believe that it's very developable at all, and I don't think that there's any intention to develop it since it is an HOA park. So even if they wanted to, I don't think that they could because of everything else. But I am concerned that they would lose some of the current uses. And so I would, I would rather this be rural conservancy than natural, just because I want to preserve those uses. And I want, if we got three quarters of a mile of new shoreline in there, I'd like that to be, be able to be kept to and not fill back in over time. So I think rural conservancy is the right SED for this.
Yeah, and I think just for the, just for what it's worth. And we did hear from Mr. Halverson about questions about the maintenance dredging out there, and I am working on, on a response for him. The draft SMP does allow maintenance dredging. It allows it, you know, i- if it was a previously authorized use, it's, you can maintain that to the previous, you know, depth. And I don't, I don't know if there are records on that for the, for this specific area. So we have to work with them on that. But the intent in the draft, as it's currently written, is to allow that maintenance dredging and, as written, to exempt it from permits. So exempt it from the need to get a shoreline permit. Now, that does not mean that there aren't going to be development standards that apply and that mitigation might apply if there is loss of ecological function. But that use, that specific use of maintenance dredging for an existing navigational canal is accommodated in the draft SMP.
Okay, I'm, I'm glad to hear that. It doesn't change my mind on, on which SED is appropriate for this, though. I think that as much foot traffic and fun that those residents have out there, keeping it rural conservancy really does seem like the appropriate SED to me.
Andy, it looks to me like the west side of the island is, is pretty dry and the east side of it is actually wetland. What would it take to divide that thing up so that the, the west side is rural conservancy and the east side is, is natural?
I would have to go back and look and see if there are records for, well, I'd have to pull the team together and try to figure that out. Go back and see if there are records to where we would draw that line. Because if you look on GeoData and you look at the way that some of the wetland resources are mapped, there are, it's kind of carved up already into different wetland categories, but how much data actually underlies those versus how much of it's, you know, like on the ground versus remote sensing and using technology from the office to do it? I'm not 100% sure. But, you know, if that's something the planning commission wants us to do and that's the direction, then we would, we would work on that, but the entire.
Part of that, I would just as soon see the whole thing reserve rural conservancy.
The, the entire thing is, the entire thing is currently mapped as wetland. And I don't know the specifics about how the, you know, what's been going on with the, when it's been dredged. And in the past, I know they've said they take the dredge spoils, they put them on the island. Whether that's led to the west side of that island being kind of higher and drier, I don't know. Again, I don't know how much of it is dry or wet unless we have, you know, definitive information about the boundaries of the wetland out there. But again, keep in mind, you know, it's not just the wetland, it's, it's anything that's 200 feet upland from the ordinary high watermark is going to be subject to the SMP.
Well, Andy, it doesn't, if those wetlands on the east side, it wouldn't matter if those were rural conservancy or natural. It's still, because it's a wetland, a very protected area, correct?
Yeah, the, the fact that there, and that's, that, that's what gets us back into that conversation about environmental limitations on the site. You know, wetland doesn't mean that nothing can ever happen there ever, period, but it does mean that there are limitations based on that environmental condition.
So, so just being a wetland, I think, gives it the protection that it needs, that we don't need to protect it further with SMP, SED, natural. I am concerned too that with a natural SED, while we might be allowed, or they might be allowed to dredge periodically to keep it open. If they then are not allowed to drop the spoils on the island and they have to truck them off somewhere, that would, you know, financially kill the whole program. So if we, if we called the whole island natural and that limited where they could put the spoils, that would be counterproductive.
And to your point, remember that the, the boundaries of a wetland out there are potentially going to, to control where those dredge spoils could potentially be placed. And I'm using the word potentially so many times because, again, I haven't seen the specific. But that is one of the things that I'm running to ground based on the questions we've received. It's not just the dredging, it's where is all that stuff going to go? And what would we say about that in terms of what are the rules today? What will the rules be in the, you know, in SMP?
I, I think they're going to have tons of hurdles anyways to do that. So to add one more hurdle by classifying that as natural is unnecessary.
Thank you, Eric. I would propose that the whole island be rural conservancy.
I'd second that motion.
I think we could have a little bit of making sure that there is, as the, many people have been saying, is to have no net loss. And that would be, and that would be an ideal. Because the homes that are there need to be sure that they're not going to, if there is more development and things, those, those, the people that are already living there will have a lower kind of grade for their, for their properties. So, I mean, it would be very nice to hear what the, um, people that are living there have, um, wanted to change it or not.
Letter, Donna. They sent us a letter.
I believe we have heard that.
Yeah, they sent us a letter.
Oh, okay, I didn't read that.
Actually, two letters.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna back us up here. So we do have a motion on the, on the table and a second to, to put this property into rural conservancy as far as our thoughts are going. So now let's have that conversation that we're happy.
So I guess my only concern with this is, first, it's been, it's already natural. But my concern is, if we leave it natural, like Eric said, what are they going to do the next time they dredge that canal?
I guess I don't see any downside to rural conservancy because the protections that you'd want for a place like that are going to be there, including not only the environmental protections, but also the use protections in rural conservancy. I think you're going to have a better opportunity for them where natural becomes no more restrictive or protective of the environment, but can be more restrictive of use. And so it, it, natural seems like a lose to me. So I think rural cons, rural conservation is the right SED.
Yeah, I would, this had, yeah, I, I would agree with Eric's comments. I, I mean, I think having listened to this and seeing the situation that it, it could, it could fall into either category, but rural conservancy seems to me to make more sense. I'd support the motion.
Is there any more conversation that anybody would like to have?
But if something goes wrong, the planning commissioners will be kind of liable. So.
I, I feel comfortable answering any questions on that. If, if somebody wanted to.
Well.
Check liability out of me, I, I stand on my two feet for that.
If, if I may, I mean, I, I wouldn't want to have a conversation about liability unless we had, you know, our legal counsel consultant on that. But, I mean, what the planning commission is doing and what staff is preparing for planning commission is bringing you the questions that are being asked and looking at all the criteria in the light of an open public meeting. And the planning commission is making that deliberation with all that information in place. And so it's, it's after that review that the, you know, the planning commission is potentially choosing to make, you know, changes to these shoreline environment designations. And it's also, just to point out, I mean, it's, it's not the end of the road for any of these revisions that are being made. You know, none of the designations will be final until, you know, the board approves the shoreline master program and it's adopted by the Department of Ecology. So there's still a lot of review that will occur. There's a lot of process. And we're just, you know, any decisions that are being made at any step of the way are just being documented for the record.
So, and, and if there's any changes, we still have the, we still have this on the table to change, to suggest to the board that this be changed to rural conservancy. Is, am, is, am I on the right page here?
Yes.
If there's no more conversation, then we will have that vote. So all those in favor of recommending rural conservancy for this parcel? Seeing if I was saying hi?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I still think that it's not, it will open up a larger part of this area. And right now, there's doing well because there is a land that is not developed there. So when they're taking in the water much better than, you know, these developments. And, and what is the, um, what is it? Is it a 10 acre?
Point of order. We're done with discussion. Are we voting?
We, yeah, Doug, we have voted, but she can, if she, she, she can state her, her side to try to convince anybody.
Yeah, we're still a democratic.
So is that what, is, is anybody want to change their vote as to what Donna's brought up?
So that's fine.
Okay, so I guess we're a good.
I am in there.
Thanks, everybody. So we're moving on to 600.
Okay, let me attempt to share another screen. Perfect, okay. So hopefully we are seeing the, the draft SMP, looks like it. Okay, great. So where we left off, we were in, we were in the matrix, the permit matrix, right? And, you know, staff is looking, as, as part of this whole discussion, as we're working on 600, you know, it's just a reminder that the concept has been brought up from various planning commission meetings that some planning commissioners would like to see, you know, more administrative permits for various uses and modifications. So this is a time when we could have that conversation, or it can be had as we move through each section of the draft, whichever, whichever seems to be the most efficient. So I can open that up for your review now. I know at least one commissioner, Commissioner Carmen, sent some comments, and those are forwarded to the planning commission. Just one caveat before we jump in there is that, you know, any of the proposed changes in this area of the permits, I plan to take it back and run it through current planning just to kind of get their, their take on it. Because, you know, I'm not, I am not a shoreline permit administrator. So I want to make sure that the folks who are going to administer from day to day just have a chance to put eyes on that. And also, I had a thought there. Anyway, so we'll, we'll run it by current planning, just so that they can take a look at that. And then, you know, those changes can then be put in the, in the draft. So with that, I will turn it over to any, any comments folks want to have, starting here in the, I think we kind of, we, the first, the last comment I remember was from the aquaculture section. I think Commissioner Casino, you were talking about, you made a comment about gooey duck aquaculture, and then that's kind of where we capped it at. Well, let's get folks to send their stuff to staff and we'll talk about this next time. So I'm going to turn it back over to the planning commission.
Andrew, maybe you can just help me out on a concept here real quick. If, if for some reason that we, we did decide that we can have administrative permits, specifically an administrative conditional use permit, if an applicant came in looking for an administrative permit and was denied the permit, would their next step be to ask for a hearing examining examiner? Or would their next step be go to Superior Court?
I believe it would be the hearings examiner.
So a, a administrative permit denial would still leave them the opportunity to have a hearing examiner?
Yeah, because it's, it's tied back to the underlying per, permit structure that the whole county permit system operates under. And that's, that's how that works. If it's a, staff decisions are appealable to the hearings examiner.
Okay.
And, you know, we can, anyway, I'm thinking outside the, outside the box here, whether there's a need for some sort of statement to that effect narrative in this document, or if, if it's adequate that it points to our county code provision. But that is how I understand it is administrative decisions are appealable to the hearings examiner and then on upward. And of course, if it's, yeah, and that's if it's appealing the county's decision. So if they're appealing, if any of these permits that have to go to ecology, if they're appealing those, you know, that goes to shoreline's hearings board or.
If a, if a applicant decided they didn't, say a gooey duck operator applicant came in and didn't want to do an administrative permit, they an administrative permit, they could still make first step be the hearing examiner instead of first step being an administrative decision?
Uh, well, that's not, I mean, that's potentially something to discuss because I, I don't think we've had that nuanced of a discussion on this. Um, I think so my understanding of the conversation so far has been, you know, planning commission wants to look at these different uses and modifications and suggest where administrative review might be appropriate, uh, and, or not appropriate. And what you're suggesting is sort of a in the middle, while you could do administrative, but if you want to stick with hearings examiner will allow, I mean,
That's exactly.
I think we can craft this how, how we view, you know, the planning commission can craft this how they want it to look. Um, that is something, so as we're moving through, if, if that's something that, that you want to note as an option, or the, the body wants to note it as an option, um, I can run it to ground. I can look at that, but.
I would like to know, like, my, my idea here is to add as much flexibility as possible where the applicant can choose either path, but if choosing a path limited them from the other path, that would change how I would suggest that this is crafted. But if they had maximum flexibility to do one or the other or both, that would be awesome.
Yeah, um, I yeah, I, I can't, hmm, and again, I'm not a current, I'm not a administrator of, of the permit system, but I cannot think of a reason why we could not propose that or why you could not propose that. Um, so if that is, if that jumps out for any of these uses as we move through, um, you know, then I will run that to ground and, and make sure that that is, I'll, I'll vet it. But I can't think of a reason why off top of my head, so.
Okay, well, I, I don't know if the rest of the commission would like to hear it, but if you could run it to ground on aquaculture, uh, I'd appreciate hearing the answer on that.
Okay, um, yeah, is, is that something that other folks would be interested in? I'm changing my screen so I can see more heads. Yeah.
Yeah, if we put in the minimum and then if someone wants to go to a higher level without having to go to court, that's a good thing.
Okay, I will run that to ground. And like I said, if there, as we're looking through this, if, if, uh, paying any of these things where you want that to potentially be an option and, you know, if, if there's no barriers to putting that in the draft, uh, then that's what, that's what we will pursue. Okay, um, so so, and I heard that aquaculture, um, so I will run that to ground for aquaculture, um, specifically, and again, uh, remember that as, as written and per state law, uh, it is commercial gooey duck aquaculture only that currently requires a, a conditional use permit. The others are substantial development permit. Um, unless they are exempt per, you know, the, the exemptions that are carved out in state law. Um, but again, as written, if it's a C or it's a P, um, currently that is, that requires hearing examiner review. So to kind of, to back up and just give a general take on, on how this works, um, if an application is exempt from needing a shoreline substantial development permit, then that doesn't go to the hearings examiner. But if it requires a conditional use permit or a substantial development permit or a variance currently that as written would go to the hearings examiner. So, uh, it's only things that are exempt from SDP and don't require any other shoreline permits that would currently are exempt from hearings examiner review. So that's kind of where we're starting from. If you need an SDP, if you need a cup, if you need a variance, as written, the draft would require hearings examiner review. They're all type three applications or type five rather, and they all currently require that. So that's kind of where you're starting from, just to keep in mind, unless you see exempt or you see the AD for administrative conditional use permit, um, that's kind of the playing field.
Andrew, what would it take to put into writing the appellate procedure for any of these decisions?
I think some of it's there in 500 already, um, and what, what's not explicitly written out there um, is referred to in chapter, uh, 20 of the county code, which is where all the permit stuff is. But drafting a small section of language that's, um, puts that specifically in the SMP, I don't think that's a very high lift. Was there any follow up on that or?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, okay, uh, so let's, I'll open it up for this page here. We're on page 88 of the draft, which takes us from agriculture down to fill and the permit requirements therein. Uh, do any planning commissioners have any questions or wish to make any comments or anything about, uh, that's on the page here?
Under voting facilities, are marinas, is, is the cup for marinas, um, required or could it be appealed?
So for some of these, I'm gonna have to defer back to, um, looking it up, right? Looking at state law. I know that, uh, there are general provisions that the WAC says these types of uses should have a cup and it's uh, broadly stated, you know, things that have the potential for, uh, large ecological impacts. Uh, and there are, uh, and there's some other criteria they use as well. Um, and then there are also, uh, some places where the WAC specifically calls out, if you're, if you're permitting X, it requires a cup, like the, can, the gooey duck is a good example of that, right? So I think, um, I would have to look at that. And so, you know, that's kind of what we can do here is I can make a list of things that you want me to specifically, um, go back and research if that's what the, the planning commission wants to see. But I, but I don't know off top of my head if marinas are, uh, I'm not recalling a specific requirement in the WAC for them to be conditional use permit. Um, but I know that there are those guiding principles that, you know, you sort of look at what's the most appropriate permit depending on the intensity, size of the use and where it's located, right?
My preference to keep ecology out of, out of it if we can, but if it's needed, we have to do it or we think that it's appropriate, then we can do it.
So you're advocating, sorry, uh, you're saying not, not just take it administrative cup, but to go, uh, to shoreline substantial development permit?
Yeah, SDP, make a C a P.
Okay.
That would be my preference if, um, because it still goes through a hearing examiner, it still goes through, the only thing it does is, doesn't get blessed by ecology. Just one more step and I'm not sure.
And that's a good distinction to make too, is that, um, whether it's, so if we're looking at conditional use permits and variances, whether the planning commission, um, wishes to revise them to administrative or not, uh, if it's still called a conditional use permit, if it's still called a variance, uh, then it needs to go and be approved by ecology. There's one more step, right? And that doesn't exist for substantial development permits. Ecology gets to review, they could appeal, but they do not have decision authority on a substantial development permit. So I'm hearing that, um, from Doug to look at, uh, I'm gonna change my screen. Is that something planning commission would like me to look at? I see Eric saying yes. Yeah, Ed. Okay, Jim, all right. I'll write that down. Okay, so yeah, I'll come back and just, um, take a look at the development standards that are in that section, um, take a look at the WAC and see if there are any specific provisions or prohibitions on that. Um, or if any, you know, what sort of language would need to potentially change if we were, or if the planning commission were to accommodate that? Okay.
On, on 135, uh, since this is, you know, a topic that we just did with LL 888, I think that if we, um, we allowed that to be an administrative cup uh, for their dredge disposal when, uh, they're dredging out there so they don't have to go through quite as much just to maintain their canal. I think that would be appropriate.
Well, here it's, oh, I see, general dredging.
Yeah, we're looking here at dredge disposal.
Mm-hmm.
And again, so just for, for clarity, for anyone watching, um, you see the, the, you know, the green language there in, uh, under dredging that puts the maintenance dredging piece in there. That was added in there to, um, you know, because that statement already existed way down in the dredging standards, just to put it up in the permit table and so that you didn't have to look as far for it. Um, but yeah, looking at dredge disposal, um, keep in mind here too, this is where that conversation of where the wetland boundaries may be and what may be allowed in the wetland, that's also going to apply here. So just, just for, for full disclosure, but, um,
Would that be defined in the development standards? Were they, you know, how far off of shore they could throw it?
Um, so the, as we get down into, into the, uh, specific standards that are below the table, that'll have all the information about dredge disposal and where and how and all of that. Um, but my point is that in this chapter, you know, that's for the shorelines, uh, there's also going to be the wetland rules that would apply as well.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I, I hear, uh, Eric saying, uh, proposing to have the dredge disposal be an administrative conditional use permit, uh, if, if that is something that could happen and advisable, et cetera. Uh, are there other planning commissioners who would like that as well?
The difference there is it wouldn't have a public hearing, right? It's an admin cup.
Correct.
It still goes through ecology, but they only if they get really upset with it, is it gonna make any difference? They're just checking it.
They're checking to make sure that it's in line with our master program and that it's in line with all the, the state rules that are in effect. Um, but yeah, if it were to, uh, that's the, the, the difference between hearing administrative review and hearing examiner, right? There is no, there are no public hearings if there's administrative review. It's also cheaper because they, the applicant does not have to pay for, uh, hearing examiner time.
Yeah, I agree with Eric. I think it, it passes enough levels of, of, uh, an eyeballs in order to be protected.
I'm actually, okay, um, so that's, I see Eric and Doug, uh, what do other folks think? Do I have nods on that or? Okay, and I'm actually gonna, I'll make my changes in here so we can all see that. Okay.
I have a, a bit of concern. You know, we're suggesting these changes, which I, I agree with, but you continue to say that it's going back to staff to make a decision or to run it by them.
Not, so not, not to make a decision, uh, not to make a decision. Um, so when it comes to anything the planning commission asks for, you know, I, I run it through the screen of, is there anything in the WAC that would prevent that? Or are there specific rules that would have to apply to that sort of thing? Uh, what I meant by that is that specifically changes to how the permits are processed. Um, we want to share that information with current planning because they are the ones who are going to be doing this day to day and see if there is additional guidance or anything like that for the planning commission, but it's not a the planning commission wants it to be a certain way and, um, you know, staff is overturning that decision or something like that. I just, uh, we want to run it by them, um, you know, because they're the ones who implement it and also because they previously, you know, went through this document stem to stern and what you see here in terms of the types of permits that are uh, required, uh, you know, there was deliberate work that went into crafting this the way it is. So just running that check, but you know, they are not decision makers in the way that the, or that the planning commission is in terms of your advisory role of the board.
So they come back with a, a, a different interpretation. Can we still stay with what we're thinking so that can go to the, to the county board?
Yeah, absolutely. Jim, whatever you, whatever you land on in terms of what you want to put, remember this is first going to your public hearing, right? So you'll get additional input there before you make your final recommendation to the board. But, um, so we have a ways to go, but by taking it to staff, we're gonna make sure we gather the information that you need, the full information about, um, the practicability of this. Do we have the expertise on staff? Is it something that we could process administratively using the folks we have on staff? Um, or would it need some sort of additional expertise which makes it uh, better to go to a hearings examiner, have a third party review or whatever? We need to get the like business needs side of it sussed out a little bit as well as part of the full information to give you before saying, oh yeah, this could be administrative and this is a good idea to put it to public hearing. I think that's a good process to be able to understand the implementation side. That's all we're saying.
I, I, I agree with that. I just want, sometimes I feel like we say something here and it, it doesn't yeah, we decide something here and it doesn't get to the commissioners, like we, we have and, and that is like, then, then what are we doing here if it's just gonna be a staffing? Anyway, so that helps me, Jennifer, that helps a lot. So thank you.
Jennifer, I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but when you do the, uh, business side of it, when you're making that analysis, are you guys gonna try to assign a dollar value to each of these tasks, what it would cost staff to do?
Not necessarily. It might be more of just a, uh, practicability of do we have expertise to make the assessment, given the standards attached to the review. So the WACs will say, for example, for marina, you have to make sure there's gonna be no net loss of ecological function. You have to have these things in place, blah, blah, blah. Do, do we have staff that feel comfortable making those calls administratively? Is that something that we have the expertise to be able to do? Or is it something that we need to take to, um, the hearings examiner for that level of review? It's more of a really practical look at implementation and expertise and what, um, staff has the capacity to do, not necessarily a cost assessment, although they may have ideas about that. I don't really know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks Jennifer for the clarification there. Um, okay, uh, are there other uses, modifications on this page that planning commission wishes to bring up any, um, of the permit types?
Um, okay, so disposal of dredging in the natural areas for boat. Conservancy, you need a cup. So thinking again about the discussion we had earlier, that's a difference.
So this is saying, uh, as written in the natural environment, that dredge disposal would not be allowed unless it was for the purposes of ecological restoration and there are sideboards on that for what that kind of project looks like. Um, and then only with a conditional use permit. So generally no, but for this purpose, yes, subject to standards. Anything else on this page? So I have, I've got the two so far and I have the comment, Jen, the global comment about, uh, any options to do, um, sort of a hybrid, um, option, you know, staff or hearing examiner, that's in my pocket and these two, that's what I've got for bar.
I go back to, to that, the dredge disposal piece again. So if you're, maybe I'm just not reading this right or not female, if you're doing ecological res- restoration with, with the spoils, I'm guessing, wouldn't you want to make that easier for them? As, or is not making it like a substantial maybe and making it, uh, admin, also an administrator?
Uh, and that, that could be something that the planning commission wants to explore. Uh, I know that's, so this permit matrix as a whole, it, it's got administrative up in the, in the legend, but it's not used in many places, but one place it is used is for, um, softer approaches to shoreline stabilization. So if you're proposing, uh, a, a method of stabilizing the shoreline, which is less harmful, uh, then it's a, it's less review, it's smaller hurdle, so to speak. Um, so that is, that's appropriate for this conversation, if that's something you want to propose.
Seems if you're, if you're doing something that's ecologically sound and is good for the community or wherever, it, why not make it easier for?
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Agreed.
Okay, uh, okay, so that's gonna be, and that, now is that we'll just talk about natural environment and the, the cup that's there, the conditional use permit, is that across the board or is that just for that conditional use permit?
Me, I, I, I wouldn't say for, possibly for natural, but for the rest, yeah.
Okay, okay, and I had that backwards. Um, okay, proposes, um, admin SDP, uh, for all but natural, keep cup for natural. Does that track?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, great.
Um, does the Corps of Engineers get involved in this if you want to dispose?
Yeah, potentially, uh, and, and SEPA as well. So we're just talking shoreline permits here and that's gonna be just a blanket, uh, statement or condition that goes on any shoreline permit is that other state and federal approvals may be required.
Yeah.
And I, uh, when we get down to that section, we can see if there's details on that there specifically, but um, yeah, absolutely. That's in, that's, you know, we talk about the classic example that is aquaculture, right? We're talking about the permits that the county is going to require, but we know full well there are others that they will need as well.
I, I think that the last time Lake Lawrence did that dredging, they had an HPA already, so I, I don't assume that you know, the Corps is going to get, has lessened up on their requirements and if anything, they've gotten tighter, but so if they had to get an HPA before, it would not shock me at all if they had to get at least that again.
That would, yeah, that would be my guess as well. All right, uh are there additional pieces here on this page? Flip down to page eighty-nine, we're just continuing through the alphabet of mods and uses here. Um, so, okay, great, we can see all that. So I'll put this up here. Um, and one thing I will note, uh, you know, there have been questions about industrial uses in the shoreline residential environment and the change that is this table here where you can see it was previously prohibited, uh but you know, green text shows a conditional use permit. That was done because the text down below in the industrial standards already allowed that. Um, and this was, this change was made to match the standards that were down below. So that's certainly still a conversation uh that the public can weigh in on and that the planning commission could decide, uh, you know, to, to take up. But that's why that change was made. And one of the things that I'm doing um kind of on the backend and I was hoping to, hoping to get it done before we get all the way down to those industrial standards is taking a look at the different shoreline envi- shoreline residential uh areas and what's the zoning underneath and whether it even allows it. Because the, the draft as written states, you know, you can only do industrial uses on the shoreline and shoreline residential if your zoning designation already allows it. And so if none of the zones actually allow it, then um you know, why, why would we have that in there? So I'm running that to ground. I've got about fifteen or so zoning districts to pick through in the code and then I will have an answer for that. But with that, I'll turn it over to you guys for this page.
Uh, under flood hazard reduction, the general one, does it really need to be a C rather than a P?
Uh, I would have to, again, would have to check the, the WAC and make sure that there's not a specific state reason why that is. And then it goes, just goes back to, you know, the previous authors of this draft and, and you know, what was proposed, so.
My preference would be a P rather, you know, like I said before, we can keep ecology out of it. P still gives the, the uh property and the public protection through the public hearing and notifications and all that stuff, so.
And, and as you have noted, uh with something like this, a flood hazard reduction measure like a levee or a dam or something like that, um, there's going to be other people that are looking at these things.
Other federal agencies are going to be involved in that.
So that's just context. Um, that's certainly something I could look into, so is that uh? Uh, and so you're saying, you said, you're saying SDP for that? Or?
Yeah, E in the, in this case, it's a, it's an SDP.
A full SDP?
Yeah, not an administrative, but a full.
Okay, um, so I could, I could look at that. Um, uh, is that something the planning commission as a body would like me to look at? And see if we can do that. Eric is nodding.
Yes.
Don? Jim? Okay, all right, let me write that down. Okay, I will run that screen through the WAC. Like I said, some of these things are prescriptive, some, the, the county has more discretion is the word I was looking for. Okay, uh, next, who's got something else for this page?
I, I have one that might be a little bit complicated. Um, what I'd like to see, so hopefully you can track this, Andy. I apologize for it being a little bit difficult, but down here in residential section one seventy. I would, I would prefer if we could single out ADUs for multifamily and subdivisions. And then with the ADUs, uh make them SDPs in rural and urban conservancy and exempt in shoreline residential.
Okay, I'm writing that one down. Uh, single out ADU, so essentially pull them out as a separate uh use. And then what were the permit, uh, what did you propose?
For rural and urban conservancy both, turn those into SDPs and for shoreline residential, uh exempt.
And then uh, how about the natural environment?
I'm, I'm cool with outlawing them in the natural still ADUs. I don't, yeah, I don't see where natural needs an ADU.
Okay, prohibited. Um, okay, so what do, what are other folks think about that? I don't have a off the top of my head, I'm not exactly sure um why it's structured this way. I think it was most uses are going to be the single family and then these other things are lumped together. Maybe that's why it was done that way. So without, without knowing why. You know, we can certainly talk about uh whether we can pick that out.
I hope we can, because we did a lot of work on ADUs, you know, eight months ago, so I'd like to continue to support ADUs where we can.
And uh, what do other folks think about that? Yeah, I see.
Yeah.
Hey, will you state proposal again, Eric? What do you want to, what is it you want to do?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, in one seventy, just the ADUs, I don't want to change multifamily or subdivisions, but just for ADUs, leave it X in natural. P in rural conservancy, P in urban conservancy, E in shoreline residential and X in aquatic.
So you're saying divide, divide that category?
Yeah.
And so also, uh, if anyone's kind of wheels are turning on that, keep in mind that when we get down to the residential section, there's an opportunity to to talk about whether there's any revision to the development standards that's necessary. Um, because you could even parse it further than that and say, you know, uh, it's allowed if it's, you know, it's an over the garage versus it's a separate structure. Because you know, then you have two footprints on the ground versus one. So there's, there's opportunities later on to uh refine that conversation, because that, you know, I'm
And I'd want to do that. I don't want to push these out into the wildlife corridors or anything, but if they're going to do a conversion or an addition, I, I wouldn't want to stop that, but I wouldn't want to do, you know, a new structure, you know, right down the road or anything.
And it also, it also could be, you know, some of the things that are already allowed in the document for increased flexibility is, you know, vertical expansions, subject to cost limitations. Somebody could decide to go up over their garage or something, you know. So, um, okay, uh, so what do folks think about that?
I'm in favor of that.
Me too.
Okay, all right. Let me write that down. Well, I wrote it down, but let me mark it in here. So you can, Eric, if you can see me typing, uh definitely let me know if I'm getting this right. Now, and is that um, a full, uh, a, a full SDP or an administrative? I don't think we, and forgive me if you said.
I don't have a strong feeling on that one either way.
Okay, well, let me do, let me do proof of concept and um, that's something you can always refine later on.
Thank you very much.
Alrighty. Anything else?
Uh, I, I, this was more of a, a question. When we're looking at beach stairs in the natural environment, are there do, do we have an inventory of beach stairs in the natural environment now by any chance? Like a lot of these high bank marine areas would have beach stairs, I would think. Would, would they be able to, would I mean, in a high bank area, those stairs get beat up pretty bad. So I, I'd be scared that if somebody lost their beach stairs, they wouldn't be able to repair or maintain because of a prohibition.
Well, that's going to be for, uh, there's going to be two different sections that would apply, right? There's the beach, well, beach, the beach stairs language that's down under the residential stuff in this chapter would apply to new U V stairs and there's, there potentially is additional language there that talks about replacement and repair, but if not, um, you know, there's other provisions in the, the chapter or in the document that apply. So repair and everything that's under the non-conforming stuff uh would potentially apply here as well. Um, typically, you know, unless there's a threat to human safety, I think the intent for a lot of things is that if you had it there, you can maintain it, you know, you may not be able to expand it, but you can maintain it. Um, so that might be something to, like, put a pin in and as we look at the standards, see what that says. But yeah, I would think that this is for, for new
Yeah.
U V stairs.
All right, well.
And uh, to your other question.
So are we saying that an area that is designated residential, that doesn't have a house on it, would never be able to put on beach stairs?
That's in the natural environment right there. So that, the prohibition that's listed right here, uh, that's for the natural environment. In the, uh, in the other environments, it currently would require a uh substantial development permit. And uh, Eric, for your other question, uh, the inventory characterization, I believe, does have stairs in it. Uh, I don't know the, I don't think that we have a summary for any of those things, but as you look through the different reaches, you can see, you know, stairs, are there, are there jetties, are there bulkheads? Yes, no, or a num- a numerical value if it was, if it was counted. So that information's in the record, but I don't know that it's in a, a, a pollable state.
Does, do you know offhand if ecology calls out beach stairs as being prohibited in natural areas?
I'd have to look at that. Um, I'm not sure. I think there's language, but I'm not exactly sure. What it says, I know that, uh, you know, and we've talked about this a little bit too, that residential uses are, you know, allowed in the natural environment, but there's uh encouragement to limit their footprint and limit the, you know, the types of things that are allowed. And I think even it's a conditional use, right, or yeah, we have it as an administrative conditional use permit. That's another example of, um, you know, where it's a less of a process already that's in the draft, but.
Well, and, and maybe the rest of the committee, the planning commission can tell me that this is not worth running down, but I, I hate limiting people's opportunities and, but I don't really want to add a whole lot more beach stairs all along our coastline. But it, I, I think there might be some value that instead of, if ecology would let us, instead of making beach stairs prohibited in natural, that they get the highest amount of scrutiny for a permit and a conditional use permit that goes before a hearing examiner. And that, that's a pretty high hurdle to jump through for a property owner, but if they really want some beach stairs, I think letting them have that hurdle to try to jump over is, is not inappropriate.
Agreed.
Yeah.
You're, you're probably right, Eric, but I, I think, you know, from my experiences, it was stairs on, on a high bank beaches. It's pretty prohibitive because, you know, it's just not necessarily putting the stairs down, but now you've got to put in a bulkhead to where the stairs will land. And that's where I think, to me, it's like where you're losing the natural piece of it. You're adding all those others.
I wouldn't even disagree with you, but I think that's where the hearing examiner would come in and say, no, this project would just be too big for natural. Because now you are talking about pouring a pad down on the beach or near the edge in a, and and so I think it would be a really high, I'm, I'm not saying you're wrong and I don't have super strong feelings on this. Uh, and I think that if somebody wanted to put his stairs in a natural area, the bar should be pretty high that they got to jump over. Uh, but I think that they should at least have the opportunity to try.
And also, also
I think that if the requirements are high enough that you ought not put it in so that it's impossible.
Yeah.
Keep in mind too that there are potentially other provisions in the SMP that would apply. So just because you're talking about one type of use, doesn't mean, you know, you will, you don't need uh stabilization or fill or something like that to accommodate that use. And all those rules are still going to apply. Um, and the other thing to keep in mind here, when we're talking about beach stairs and high, high bank beaches, uh, all the rules of geologically hazardous areas are going to apply. So if it's, if it's not thing, we're not going to permit that. Uh, if it's going to exacerbate that existing hazard, it's unlikely to, it's going to face some headwinds, let's put it that way. Um, so all the, all these things are, are still going to be in play here. But what I'm hearing is just kind of a research project to go look and see, is there, is there a, a reason in, in-state law for outright present prohibition and if not, change it to a full cup?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, and I think that's Jim and that's what Don says. Okay, let me mark that and we'll move on.
Before you move on to, I want to move back to mooring structures, but.
Give me one sec. Okay, go ahead, Doug.
Mooring structures is a good example of differences between the marine environment, river environment and lake environment. And I don't know the answer to this, but like a boat lift on marine environment is totally different than a boat lift on a lake. And I think on a lake, it shouldn't be a P for residential, it should be administrative. I don't think you need to, on your single piece of property, you don't need to have a hearing examiner, a whole bunch of hoopla. You ought to be able to make the decision. Same thing with buoys, everybody puts a buoy out to keep the boats away from their you know, their swimming area. So to have to, you know, theoretically to have to go get a, have a hearing examiner to put a buoy out. But in the marine environment, you need to do that because it's a navigational issue.
Well, and I think just, uh, yeah, and I'm not saying we can't explore that, but just keep in mind, I think the buoys here specifically are those that are designed and intended for mooring versus navigational aid. I think there are some carve-outs in the language below for navigational aid buoys. And we can parse that when we get there, but, but I would just keep that in mind. Uh, but also to your other point, um, I think as I said, the, at the last meeting or the one before that, you know, as we move through this chapter, uh, I am interested in, you know, looking at specific things and specific language or specific permit types where, you know, if there's a logical split between the shoreline water bodies, then that's how we can address that. This could potentially then be an area where it's going to make it a little longer, make the table a little longer, but um, you know, if there needs to be a separate entry under one of these for boat lifts, comma, lake, boat lifts, comma, marine. Um, I mean, that would be the way that I would see to propose that. As that, to me, that's the easiest way to do it. And then of course, it's going to have to have cor- uh corroborating language down in the, the text below, but that's what I would.
Right.
That's what I would say.
I would think in this case that on a lake, it ought to be an administrative on marine, it should be a P. And I don't know what it should be on a river, whether it should be allowed or not. I need guidance on that.
If it's something, while I know that uh on streams, we, we're a lot less flexible uh when it comes to docks and things like that, because the streams that we have, they move and they move quickly, right? So it's, it's a, it's a uh hazard, right? It, you know, debris accumulation and you know, impediments to navigation and those sorts of things. Yeah, so I know that, I'm pretty sure that docks are not allowed, uh, when you look at the standards down below. Um.
Same thing with uh launch ramps, you know, marine rails, what we call marine rails, but I know that some lakes, some big people have boathouses on a lake and the, the rails go down to the water and because the water doesn't fluctuate level, you don't have to run it sixty feet out down the beach like they do in a marine environment. So there's a difference there also. So that ought to be a P. So I, I, my opinion is we need to look at these and separate them out based on water bodies.
So I don't, oh, go ahead.
Doug, what do you think, what do you think about um leaving rivers and marine as one category and lakes as a separate category? Doug, what do you think, what do you think about, um, leaving rivers and marine as one category and lakes as a separate category? Instead of three categories total.
Because that could work, because I think marine and rivers might be a lot closer, but.
I think so too. At least the protections would be a lot more similar than the protections needed for a lake.
Yeah. And I'm wondering what, what's the most efficient way to document this? Because then I'm looking, I'll be looking for whole buy-in from majority of the planning commission and doing it, uh, use by use. If that's the best way to do it, or, um.
I would, I would split 160 into two categories, being lakes on one category and rivers and marine in the other category.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I'm saying in terms of capturing, um, you know, every, everyone's thoughts on this. And, uh, and I, I wanna make sure I have enough direction to go on from planning commission. Um, so.
Well, when we get into, into 160, you, you know, the design of a dock for marine environment is gonna be totally different than that for a lake. And so it's gonna have to be split out there anyway.
Okay.
Andrew, what impact does this, uh, potentially have on you and your staff and time?
Uh, it, it takes time to go back and research, uh, and for bring back a new proposal. But I mean, that's kind of what's going on in the background, right? Between meetings, I'm running things to ground, the planning commission has asked for, and, uh, looking at the different edits that have been proposed and getting that draft ready. So I don't have a, you know, hours and estimation for you, but it, you know, it's just adds to the list of things I gotta do to get a document ready for hearing. But that's the, that's the process we're in, you know? So I'm trying to, that's why, and that's why we're, you know, we kind of pivoted to this approach a while back of saying, we want to, you know, get these decisions made by the whole planning commission before staff then goes and, uh, does that work? So as long as there's a majority of planning commission who is saying, this is what we want the S and P to look like, then that's, you know, that's what I take as my marching orders. So. So I don't, I'm spitballing here, but maybe the, you know, I could try to kind of create these categories and type out some letters and just kind of have folks nod. If that is the best way to do, I mean, I, we're making the sausage here. It's not, I don't, I don't know the easiest way to do that, so. I'm also running out of mind power today. All right. So I'm gonna start with the, uh, with the boat lifts. And that may just be how we have to do this. I, because I think, yeah, I mean, obviously the development standards, I mean, we're gonna have to get into later and. And I will make the pink color match better next time, but, um, so Doug, why don't you give me your proposal again for, uh, boat lifts, lakes? And I'll put it out here and we will see how she flies. So starting at natural.
I would assume that's, that's, um, not prohibitive.
So this is the natural.
It's a natural environment.
For boat lifts in lakes and, and presumably this is gonna be on a parcel that already has some sort of primary development on it.
Yeah, or even if it isn't, it's. I'm not sure that you should have a boat lift in a natural environment.
Okay, then that's, so that, that, whoops, don't be green. Okay. So that would be prohibited then, if that's the proposal, um, and then what would you?
Say admin there and admin, admin and admin.
Uh, SDP?
Yeah, add SDP.
Yeah, well, I will, I will come up with a.
Yeah, whatever the terminology is you come up with.
And then aquatic, um, well, that's probably gonna have to just be the.
Marine, right?
Going with the underlying, um.
Definitely SDP.
Trying to think about that, um, cause it's already gonna be, I mean, well, it's a boat lift, it's over the water, right? It's gonna be aquatic. So I think this is one of those situations where it's just, it gets the superscript and it, it, we say it goes with the, what the shoreline is, so.
Yeah, it's just that there is no aquatic category under lakes, right?
There is, uh, water word of the ordinary high water word.
Okay, then it's a two.
Yeah. Yeah, that's how I understand that. Um, okay, so that, so yeah, so that has fleshed out. Ah, there we go. There we go. That looks pinker. Okay, that flushes out that proposal. Um, what does the rest of the planning commission think about that? The Eric thumbs up, Don, okay. Scott, okay, great. Okay, uh, and then, so Doug, you said buoys. Um, and again, I think, I think this.
Definition of what you wanna have defined for a buoy.
Yeah, so let me see what these.
We placed, we, in our lake management district, we actually placed navigational buoys.
Would we be able to make, uh, buoys and floats and shoreline residential exempt and not need a permit at all?
Um, potentially if it meets the criteria for exemption, we'd have, so we can look at the criteria and see if there's a reason why. And I wonder if the reason there is that it is, um, depending on where you put it, is influences navigation. Uh, cause that's one of the criteria for saying whether something would be exempt or not, is if it's not, you know, if it limits navigation or not. Um, but maybe.
Seventy-five hundred bucks.
Sorry?
It's less than seventy-five hundred bucks, so. That included in that category? I mean, I don't know what's included in the.
Generally, yeah, I mean, it, so there's, you know, there's specific carve outs for specific things, um, ranging from really small up to a single family home. Uh, but then there are, there, um, there's that blanket statement, you know, if it's not one of these other things and it costs less than this, and it doesn't interfere with navigation, I think is one, then it, then it can be exempt. So that was floats, uh, floats in the shoreline residential environment. Is that right, Eric?
Yeah, floats and buoys in shoreline residential.
Okay.
I'm kind of a little concerned there. Um, it seems like you're gonna have that one neighbor that's gonna put it out and, and out too far or whatever. And there has to be some sort of oversight to, to it. I mean, I believe it's pretty minimal. I agree with that, but there has to be some type of oversight to where it's being placed at least. And, you know, if somebody comes along and is the rabble rouser in the community and puts it in a spot where nobody else likes, what kind of control do you have over?
Well, if somebody leaves something out in public property, somebody else comes by and moves it.
Well.
I mean, that's generally what happens. If, if we've, we've had buoy fights on the lake before and, you know, once, once you're out in the water, that's public property. And, and people will, yeah, if you put a sign out in front of your place, that don't mean nothing.
Well, it's, it's, it should.
Yeah.
Yeah. I get what you're saying, Eric, but I think there just needs to be some type of oversight, a minimal at, at best.
I, I think that there probably are places for oversight and maybe there are in other things. I don't know if it necessarily needs to be in the shoreline master program though.
So keep in mind, keep in mind also that what we're talking about here are the types of permits that are required and the thresholds for if it's administrative versus hearing examiner, but, um, there, anything that's, even if it's exempt from a shoreline substantial development permit or exempt from hearing examiner review, there are still development standards below this table that are gonna apply to those uses. So you could be in a condition where you're exempt, but you know, you, these rules still apply and you're only exempt if you meet all these criteria. Uh, otherwise you require a permit. So Jim, the thing you're asking for absolutely is, is down below in the, in the standards. And, you know, I, with these sorts of things with floats and buoys, it, it kind of falls in that category of things that you hope people even think to call the county before they just do it. So, but this is the place where we build all those rules. You know, this is the kind of thing where people do go out and they, they place buoys and they do things and they, or they cut it, you know, wanna cut trees by the water and don't know, oh yeah, you technically need some level of oversight for that. So that goes back to that whole public education, uh, piece as well. So.
I would put floats and buoys as exempt. They still need a permit, but they don't have to.
Well, they still, there's still review and there's still standards, but there, if, if you do that, then there would not be a permit that gets issued. Yeah. And again, I would have to, um, just being the fact that these things are in the water, um, go and look and see if there is not some sort of hang up with the exemption criteria that wouldn't allow that. But again, that's the, that's the homework. I can go and do that. So for, okay, so for floats and buoys, uh, in the shoreline residential environment, switching that to exempt if there are no hangups for doing so in the criteria, um, do I have planning commission approval for that?
Yes.
Okay. I'm seeing nods. Great. All right. Let me make that change. That's the wrong button. There we go.
Um, I mean, I see that for lakes. I'm not so sure it applies to marine environment though.
So that was the next thing I wanted to say was, yeah, I mean.
It don't count for marine, that only lakes.
Only lakes.
So then what we're gonna have to, okay, so.
So put those as, as a combined category under lakes. Floats and buoys.
I, well, I, until we see how that all shakes out, I'd prefer to just.
Okay.
Like sift in between the water bodies, I, if, if that's okay, that might be here. But then, yeah, it certainly, if, if, if they're identical, when all the dust settles, we could certainly combine them for, for efficacy sake. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so P, so that would stay, uh, substantial development permit there if, if that were the, if that were the, and I'm, I'm getting to where I'll ask for.
The admin SDP.
Okay. Well, I can put that up there and then you all can talk about it.
I'd rather have it exempt, but.
Oh wait, am I doing this right? No, sorry, you're right.
They should be exempt.
Okay, that's right. That's what you're saying. Okay. And then what's in green above then is, is would stay for the marine.
Marine, correct.
Okay, uh, then I will delete these comments because they are now in the incorrect place. Okay, so now this shows floats and lakes. If they're allowed to be exempt, we'll do it, or that will be your proposal. If they are allowed to be exempt, uh, if buoys are, then you know, that as well. Okay, great.
Apply, that would apply to real, all the other categories also. We want, we want people, even in natural with floats, we want them out in the water, not on the shoreline.
So, okay.
And they want buoys out in the lake for moorage instead of docks. We talked them into allowing docks, I think.
Uh, it's in the, oh, and uh-huh, I see, I didn't change that here. Um, I think in the, in the text down below, there is an option to allow docks in the natural environment, uh, per the planning commission's direction. Uh, it's not reflected here, so I should probably make a little note that if someone's reading this, they don't see that that's inconsistent. So that's another thing to do. Okay. So this is what Doug is, Doug, does that look correct to you? And I'm guessing in the aquatic environment, it would probably be a two again. But, cause really that's, where else are they gonna be? Um, okay. All right. Does that look correct, Doug?
Yeah, for those, then, you know, if you wanna have another category, you know, for lakes, for single, single use docks to align with the note down below.
Well, I want, before we move on to that, um, is this, is this proposal, again, I'll vet it, but is this proposal, uh, what the planning commission wants to move forward with? Yeah, okay, great. Okay, so you're saying potentially do that for docks as well?
Right.
Really all of them, we're doing it, or, you know, you're interested in doing it for all, um, okay. All right.
The docks would be a, an admin SDP, not be the difference.
Okay, so let me. Underlined. So you're saying, uh, is that across the board is your proposal or?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Because what we, what we discussed earlier about docks in the natural area is that if you don't allow a dock, you're gonna end up with the homeowner ripping up the beach, the whole lake. They're gonna destroy the, I mean, I shouldn't say destroy it, but they're gonna have kayaks and all, you're gonna have all kinds of things that are going up on the beach. But if you give them a dock, they'll, and, and limit the space, they're gonna use their dock and their floats. It will improve the shoreline ecological function.
So I do know for docks specifically, um, it is also going to depend on whether it is, well, no, okay, I'm sorry. There are, as we know, there are, are limitations on whether docks are, um, exempt from SDP. So what we're saying is if it meets that exemption, I mean, it goes without saying, if it meets the exemption criteria, it's exempt. Uh, but if it's not exempt, what you're saying is, okay, SDP, but make it administrative.
Right.
Right, okay. So that has now been typed out. What does the rest, what do the rest folks think? Okay. Right, I see nodding. Um, okay, uh, how about the joint and public use docks? Since we're, we're here, we're looking at all these things. That currently would, you know, those standards would apply regardless of the environment.
I think if you have a, if it's on a lake again, but what we want them to do is to have joint docks. And so it ought to be an admin SDP at the worst.
So does this refer to two properties sharing a dock?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, which in general, the document, i- in those instances where docks are allowed, um, you know, that ideally is preferred. Um, I think that the draft, or at least that was in the draft, and I think now that might be, there's an option to take that out. But, yeah, so, but you know, there was an encouragement for joint use or public use versus every single shoreline water body.
What you're adding there refers to lakes.
Right. Correct, thank you. So Doug, your proposal for that was?
Admin SDP at the worst, and it's over under residential, if it's required, exempt applies, it's okay, but.
Well, exempt is gonna apply anywhere, uh, only if it's, it's that cost thing, right? There's specific.
Right, there's times when it will, yeah, twenty thousand dollars for a remodel of a, of a existing dock on the lake.
Yeah, and I think there is a, um, yeah, so that will, that will apply if, if it, you know, meets that. And I think that, so we can certainly footnote that. I mean, that could be true for any of these environments, I believe.
Well, the marine environment, I think what was like two thousand dollars or something, there's nothing, nothing you can do.
Yeah, uh, well, I mean, i- in the marine environment, you need an SDP essentially, right? Uh, unless it's exempt, which as we know is a, it's harder to have that be exempt based on the cost limitations. So I don't know why my phone is not showing up. And, uh, I don't, you know, we're obviously not gonna get all the way down to the development standards tonight, but for, at least for mooring structures anyway. So I will also, um, you know, I can note it down there for next time, just that that's under consideration so that we don't have to constantly. you know, I can note it down there for next time, just that that's under consideration, so that we don't have to constantly flip back and forth. Okay. The only one left in here is Marine Rail, which I did recall, um, you having thoughts.
We allow boat houses, so I guess if we say, um, I, I, I would.
We don't allow new water structures, I don't believe.
Pardon me?
I don't believe we allow new overwater covered.
Right, but we could have a boathouse, we're allowed, it allows a boathouse up on shore, so uh, you'd have to have a rail in order to get in there.
I think that was smaller structure for things like kayaks and things like that. Like, um, I'd have to go back and look, but I believe that was for small.
If it doesn't allow a boat, you know, room for a twenty-three foot boat, then we don't need that separated out for lakes.
Yeah, I think, um, I pretty, that was just like, it was like a storage shed type thing. I don't think it was intended for, not that someone couldn't propose that, I don't think, you know, else for, under other sections of the document, but I don't think that was for that.
Yeah, okay, then leave it alone, we'll find out when we get to one sixty.
Okay. Woo, okay, um, so this is what I have thus far as the proposal here. Um, again, you know, with all these things, we'll run the ground, hitting save. That was a big one. Uh, okay, is there anything else on this page? Page eighty-nine? And, okay, so, uh, oh. Okay, the residential stuff is split, I see. Um, so, okay, uh, any, anything else on?
Shoreline stabilization.
Yeah.
Here again, I think there's a big difference between lakes and um, marine environment and rivers.
So.
Bulkheads can really impact the, what happens in the marine environment with tides and water flow and all that stuff. But it's different in a lake. And so I think there should be for a hard surface, a difference in what is required. Like in a marine environment, for a hard surface, a C is, is, is appropriate. But in a lake environment, I would think that an, uh, an admin SDP is fine. We don't need to have a hearing examiner and and whatnot for somebody to put a bulkhead on their fifty-foot of waterfront or a lake.
I mean, I, yeah, I know that one of the considerations for this and for having it be a hearing examiner review is that hearing examiner, um, you know, those types of projects that generate more interest or controversial, et cetera, um, you know, kind of filter through a hearing examiner and you know, I know that bulkheads can potentially be controversial, you know, if you're gonna put one in and, you know, your neighbor finds out, they're potentially concerned about that. And, you know, we do notice neighbors with these applications, so, um, that may be why that's written that way. Um, that's something that I can look into. I was trying to look into this today. I couldn't recall the specific, um, if there was a specific, uh, requirement for this, um, but I knew it would come up, so I don't have that answer right now, but, um, I can look at it, if that's something the planning commission wants to propose, that there be a difference. I know that state law does not parse it when it comes to, uh, the standards, which we're gonna obviously get into, but when it comes to the standards for bulkheads and when you can have them, this is essentially if saying, if it's allowed, this is the permit you would get, because there's that whole other conversation to be had with bulkheads and what, what state law says, uh, and if there are differences between the different environments, there is not a whole lot of wiggle room when it comes to the standards. But the permitting, um, you know, is potentially something that has a little more leeway.
And one of the things you were gonna look into is the science behind uh, ecological shoreline function in a, in a utrophic lake.
Well, I'm, I'm putting together some, some information for planning commission on bulkheads and it's kind of looking at all of it, so it's looking at what state law says, what it allows. Uh, it will have some information in it about, um, lake ecology and, and all those sorts of things, so, um, we're gonna cross that bridge when we come to it. Yep, it is forthcoming, and yes, that is my goal, obviously, is to have that ready for you when we get there. Um, but yeah.
Is there a difference also between, uh, wha- what's displayed here and rivers and streams?
So this is for, so if there is a difference, so the, the table here is, is meant to be a summary of the permit requirements that are down below, as best, as best, um, can be described, you know, if there's a conflict between the two, it's the standards down below that are gonna, gonna rule, so there's, there's more language down below that is gonna be specific to these different, different environments, and yes, there are, if you're looking at different environments, there may be different different rationale for requiring, um, a bulkhead or different things you have to demonstrate, um, that's all gonna be down below, but this is saying, if it's something that is not prohibited, you know, these are the permits that would apply, so unless it says otherwise, um, you know, you, you can assume it applies to any type of shoreline environment, but you have to look at the standards to see if there's anything specific for whichever environment. Yeah, so, um, so.
Do we have any more suggestions or questions for Andrew up here? This seems like a good spot to break.
It, I, I would agree, it does, uh, I would, if we could just a minute to, um, clarify that last piece on the lakes versus marine, that's something I can look at, and then, then I think we could call it, if that's okay with.
Absolutely.
Uh, okay, great, so Doug, um, again, just fleshing out your thought for others to see on the screen. So hard stabilization on lakes, you were saying, uh, administrative SDP if, if that is um, something we can do, if that is. Okay. So.
That, natural would be a C, like it.
Okay. Okay, then I'll let you kind of guide me as I move across the page here. So for rural conservancy.
Um, I think that could be an admin SDP. You ought to be able to make that. That's questionable, maybe, you know. Maybe that's a full SDP, I, I don't know, I'd have to see whatever else, but um, urban conservancy and rural and shoreline residential should be an add, so SDP.
Uh, well, actually, you know what? What I'm thinking here, um, keep in mind that, uh, shoreline stabilization is actually, um, exempt from SDP if it's for a single-family home. So just, that's one of those things that's carved out in state law outright. You do not need an SDP. But this is one of those scenarios where you may not need an SDP, but you could potentially need other permits such as a conditional use permit. So even these, this hard soil and stabilization, even written here in the black text, if, if it's for single-family resident and it's a typical bulkhead for typical single-family residential development, it would not require an SDP. Other permits, yes, not an SDP. So you could potentially look at doing, uh, administrative conditional use permit, or, I don't know. Um, I suppose, though, if it were not exempt, if it were, didn't fit into that criteria, it could then require an SDP, but basically, the draft is written, says, uh, it's a conditional use permit for hard stabilization. Um, which, at that point, that might be a good place to stop. Cause I don't know if we're gonna, cause I don't know if, if that changes your.
I don't think we're gonna settle this until you get further information, when we get to it at chap, section one seventy-five.
Okay. Okay, uh, well, in that case, we basically got through the matrix, so that's great. Um, I will, I'll take this out for now, but you know, obviously, it's all still, you know, subject to editing in the future. So I'll make a note, this is where we stopped, um. Okay, well, uh, if there's nothing else, then that concludes, uh, my portion.
Great, Andrew, thanks a lot. I know you did through a lot of stuff, but you're doing a great job.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Well, let's do calendars real quick, so would anyb- anybody be away, unable to attend this? Let me, on the seventeenth? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody there. How about March third? Okay, Jennifer, how about some staff updates?
Great, well, I'm gonna respond to the four requests that Planning Commissioner Carmen relayed at the last meeting. Um, I'll walk through them, one through four. So there was a request for planning commissioners to have a county email address. Staff, uh, submitted that request to our county IT department. We actually submitted it a while ago, we just poked them again about it, and we're looking at options, so we'll provide an update when able. Um, they're looking at consistency with how other boards and commissions, um, are treated and legal issues and how they would mask it and but I'll have more on that, hopefully we can solve that sooner than later. Um, the second question was a request for background information on each planning commissioner. So staff checked in and the, the board office, they handle all your appointments and have your application stuff. They don't seem to have resumes or bios on file for each appointed member. So my suggestion is just that if that's something that you wanna do, each of you could create a little short bio to share with other members. Email it into Polly, and Polly can just email those out back to the group. So that's a solution, maybe, pathway. Um, the third question was about, uh, planning commission member presence at board of county commissioner briefings and work sessions, so Commissioner Carmen requested a PC member be invited to staff briefings to the board where the planning commission recommendation is relayed. So staff ran this up the chain, and the short answer is no, there won't be a change to the current protocol, which is that planning commission review is considered complete with the transmittal of the written recommendation to the board of county commissioners. But there's a caveat to that, so in your rules of procedure, um, if on the pretty rare occasion, although it happened last year, uh, if the staff has a different recommendation from the planning commission, the staff reaches out to the chair. So something for you to know, Jim, the staff reaches out to the chair and informs the chair that there might be a different recommendation and then invites the chair or the chair's representative to that meeting. That happened with Scott last year when the staff was recommending something a little bit different, a co-designation of Ag and some forest stuff, so Scott was able to join that briefing to answer questions, but as a matter of course, on a regular basis, um, no, that's, the protocol is not gonna change to have PCs at those regular work sessions.
Those are closed meetings?
They're not closed, they are, you can watch them on they're broadcast on YouTube, but they're closed, I guess, in terms of who gets the Zoom link and can be a participant, that's decided by the board.
So is it appropriate, Jennifer, that we see the, the written recommendations?
You do, so this is something that you'll learn, Jim, too, because, um, as Scott well knows, um, the planning commission recommendation comes from you, the chair signs it before it's transmitted to the board. And the board gives a lot of deference to the planning commission recommendation, so it really behooves the planning commission to put in that recommendation all the pieces that you want the board to be looking at and considering, and how we do it is that after you have your final, um, vote or whatever, you've made your recommendation, staff will draft up a draft memo from you, planning commission to the board, and put a description of the recommendation in there, and then share that with you, the chair for your editing, and you can add to it, or if there's a minority opinion, that gets added. And then you sign it, and then that gets transmitted to the.
Is that something that everybody can see, or is it just like per V to?
Um, no, no, you can share it with everybody. You can do it however you want as the chair. Um, staff just simply takes your recommendation, writes it up in a memo, and just provides it back to you for review and signature, so if you wanna have that shared with the whole commission for their editing and input and do that at a meeting, that's completely fine, I mean, that's your process.
Well, I, you know, I hate putting extra work on you guys too, but I do think it's a good idea for everybody to see what we're sending to them. That's just my thinking.
Yeah, you always have that option, the chair has always provided the copy, um. If you'd like the planning, the draft can go to the whole planning commission, but then chair, it's gonna be up to you. Staff is not gonna be working with individual planning commissioners to amend to this recommendation, that will be for you, Jim, to, to corral and to do at a meeting, for example, where you can make changes.
I would like to do that, then.
Cool.
Maybe I can get together with you, how we do it, but, uh, so, you know, but I think everybody should see what we're sending to the commission, the board.
Yeah, and so once that's signed, um, that's transmitted straight to the board. Uh, goes in their packet before their work session, and then.
I think I, you know, before, before we get to the final, I just believe it would be good for everybody to see that they agree. And I don't know if you guys think any different, or, but it seems like you should see it. It's coming from all of us.
I'd like to see it, Jim.
I agree, Jim.
Jennifer, uh, just real quick on this last issue, um, where you said that there'd be no changes in protocols and the planning commission's written recommendation is the, uh, last of it. Uh, when you say that there is no change in protocols, does that mean that within CPAD, they said they didn't wanna change it, or the board county commissioner said that they did not want it?
This went up to the board office, this request.
So this came from the board of county commissioners, that they don't need anybody from the planning commission to explain themselves?
It might have been the plan, it might have been the county manager, I'm not exactly clear, but it went up all the way to the leadership of.
No, I'm just wondering who's, who was the final no on that, is all I'm wondering.
Yeah, I'm, and I can't, I'm not a hundred percent sure, I just know that the, the leadership passed back down that message.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I do wanna say that, again, the board gives a lot of deference to the PC recommendation, totally, so I think that's really important, so I I like your process change, I think it's good. I do also, um, wanna point out that even though they give a lot of deference to it, the board often will take a different direction, just to manage expectations, they get their own public input, they have their own deliberations, they often ask staff to create uh, different options, they may get input from legal staff that has them explore different options, so the planning commission recommendation is a big important part of this, but um, at the end of the day, it's the board's call, and they, they have a lot of discretion to kind of go in the directions that they wanna go in.
That's their prerogative.
Yep, so the final one was to request to spend, uh, less time on items that the planning commission has, I think it was said, little control over, like the capital improvement program. Um, and I realize that's not the most fun thing you look at all year, but the, you know, the role of the PC is to review and host public participation on all comp plan and development code amendments that the board puts on the docket, and the CIP is one of those, it's a comp plan amendment, so it just by rule, it must be taken through the PC for review and public hearing. It is like some other amendments that'll come to you, um, you haven't had these in a while, but it is one of those amendments that does go through a lot of significant front-end scoping and project development before it gets to you. Um, but the planning commission is still able to review it and provide a recommendation, um, on the CIP to, to the board, so you're still an important part of that process, and one of the most important parts is just to allow that extra, be that host of the public review of the CIP, um, so also, just this issue of control and what the PC has control over, I just wanna clarify for the record, that, you know, the planning commission, y- you don't have a lot, you don't have control over what comes to you, that's kind of defined in the law and in the Thurston County Code. Um, but you're the research and fact-finding body, so you do have this critical role in reviewing these proposals and holding the hearings and creating the options. Considering the good of the whole community, uh, looking at the science and the staff analysis, and then putting that all forward to a recommendation to the board, and, um, so it's a super important role, and I know not all of the projects are maybe as fun as others, or you feel like you have as much wiggle room as others, but you you are, you know, the planning commission is looked to by the board to provide guidance on, on all of those things that come. you are, you know, the planning commission is looked to by the board to provide guidance on, on all of those things that come to you. And speaking of which, in two weeks, staff is briefing the board on sort of the mid-cycle check-in on our current twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dockets for code amendments and comp plan amendments, the thing that decides what comes to you. And we did receive a couple of new applications last year, we'll be briefing the board on those, they'll make decisions, and if they want to reprioritize anything, add anything, take anything away. And then we'll be able to bring that updated work program for you, probably at your first meeting in March, so you'll get kind of another picture of your year ahead. Because believe it or not, it's not going to be all SMP, and so I'm starting to get a little bit nervous, because we do have to start bringing additional things to you, we have wireless coming up next, and then we have some other kind of we have LID code changes and some other kind of things that need to get to you, so just giving you a preview that probably the first meeting in March, you'll see like what, what else is coming through the year, or is planned to come to you throughout the year, and it may help you think about how that fits with the SMP review. That's all I had.
Great, thanks, Jennifer, for all any kind of new business? Thanks staff for making me look good on the first time, we're adjourned. Thanks, Polly.
Amen, thanks, Jim.
Yep, thank you.